I have six thirty. Someone called the real border of Armenia for Monday, October nineteenth, one twenty. We'll call.
Alderman Stevens?
Here.
Alderman Hudson?
Here.
Alderman Motley?
Here.
Alderman Wilkins?
Present.
Alderman Rogers?
Present.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
All right, if I get everybody's hands, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Yes, please, um, please turn that knob at the time. Get the push on. Yeah. Do this first. Thank you.
Now, I don't believe that Jackie Sample is here, is that correct?
Correct, she's not here.
Okay. Is she telling her?
I talked to her. She got the data.
Uh, third on the agenda is introduction of Jackie Sample. She's a candidate for Missouri House Representative in the forty-fourth district. Um, she's not here right now, uh, but if she shows up, uh, we would enable her at that time to work her into the, uh, community at that point. That's okay with everybody. Uh, that moves us to consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve all after you have time to look at them unless you want to break something out or do something different. As many as prior meetings of board, minutes of public, 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 committee meeting, October twelfth, twenty twenty. Minutes of general government, public safety committee, uh, meeting, October twelfth, twenty twenty. And then, uh, reports of the treasury and collector's reports and activity reports.
Move that we accept the consent agenda as is?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda is throughed. That moves us down to accounts payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars equal four hundred forty-six thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-one cents.
Make a motion we approve the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred fifty dollars in a grand total amount of four hundred forty-six thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
Motion and second of approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, that puts us to number six, comments from citizens. So, open the floor for comments from citizens. One, two, three, four. Then we'll close, uh, comments from citizens at this point. We move the action agenda. Finance, we have none, is that correct?
Correct.
B would be, uh, legal, uh, a policy, it's resolution, a policy resolution, establish a volunteer cadet program with the Central City Police Department. We want to have discussion on that. Or, where we at with that?
Didn't we discuss, kind of stay away from that until we got some? Cindy, kind of, she was worried about all the legalities concerned with that. Is she good with that?
I don't know. Did she mention that the legality?
The issue was the insurance, um, and the feasibility and whether they were still going to be around, but, uh, they said the local organization wasn't impacted by it.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but, uh...
So, is the Boy Scouts covering it under insurance? Will that be the city?
The city would be paying for it, but they'd be covered in the Boy Scouts.
Is there a role policy?
I think it's a great deal, but I just want to know what she said, what, two, two meetings ago?
I thought her recommendation was waiting until the beginning of the year. Was that not staying?
I remember that as well, but...
And she was going to do some investigating just to make sure. I don't know.
We know she, Sydney's still working on things with that before we just approve it? If she was still looking to it?
Um, I will have to talk to her specifically about it.
Should we table this until?
Should we?
Maybe.
Take a motion to table?
And some move.
Second.
Number first and a second to table a motion for the, uh, resolution for volunteer cadet program, see, this department. We'll follow up with legal counsel and make sure we're good on all that part of what we're all talking about, right?
We're good.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we'll do that, what I was saying, okay? So, we'll find out from her. We'll leave that with you, Heather, okay? Take care of that. That moves us down to permission licensing, we have none. Is that correct still?
Yes.
Purchasing, we have none.
Correct.
All business.
Now, if you want to make, so we have another thing that I was thinking. I think it now has a five or higher than a dollar. We do enough?
It's all going to kind of tie together.
Okay. So, I was contacted by, um, Taylor Warford and Jenny Zollers with the chamber. So, the Minmo Mud Truck contacted them saying, you know, they asked the city or the rec or somebody, I don't know who they asked, if they could park on the square, and we told them, or somebody from the city told them, only special occasions. That we don't allow food trucks or anybody to come into the city unless it's a special occasion. And their concern is, this is the second time that they've seen the chamber post something about a food truck coming and it not be a wine walk or it not be, you know, any event. It's just a food, come get your festival food and there, there's trucks coming and it's not a special weekend. It's just some random Saturday. So, they're wondering what makes their coffee truck different, which is understandable. And is there a way, can we do an agreement or is there laws? Is there something set up that's not allowing them to do it? Or what's, what's going on there?
Have to get some investigation and she can bring us all up today.
Yeah, I actually had a conversation with Jenny this morning. Jenny, the, the chamber should have had their vendor contact the city to get permission, just like Minmo Mud did, and they did not. So, I actually have that in your packet tonight to, to approve is to, uh, to allow, um, Eric Aston, he's the owner of the food truck that sells the onion blossoms and bubble cakes and stuff like that at Anchor Fest, to allow them to set up, uh, this coming weekend on the city square. They do have a current business license. One of the things that I think would help this, and I reached out to the city manager's list service to see what other cities do, and technically, we don't have to bring these issues to the board every single time. I think that's just been common practice for us to bring the issues to the Board of Aldermen. And at some point in time, maybe that's what, uh, the board asked for. But you could, and under the city code, it would allow me to approve these as they come in, for people to block off streets or to, um, to use the public parking spots, um, if that's something that the board would consider or think that was okay. And I have come up with a application process for that. I ran it by Sydney, she agrees. The application process would be the best option. And so, anyway, this is, this is what I've, I've come up with. If you all are in agreement, this is what I'd like to move forward with. Because I think we are going to have an increase in requests and we can post this on our website. We can let people know. So, if they want to post, park around town or whatever, we let the chamber know so that they have this on file and give it to people that are interested.
Correct.
This way, we, you know, we talked a little bit this morning and it gives us an idea of what they want to do, what the expectation is and what's going to go on with the event with their trailer or food truck or whatever it may be. And, uh, you know, if it turns into a circus and they're giving elephant rides, then that's something totally different than they signed up for if we have it riding and they've asked for a permit to do it, right? So, I think that that cleans it up tremendously. And so, she did some good research and thanks for reaching that field, the city, and getting that back, but...
So, we're saying it doesn't have to be a special occasion. If, if they want to do it on a Saturday next month, they can just fill this out. Now, are you going to keep this on file and they can just call you and say, I want to do this November whatever? And you say, no, you got to come back in and fill this out again.
Go on, I just want to make sure. And if they wanted to do multiple dates, I would not mind, you know, if they wanted, if they knew ahead of time they wanted to list multiple dates on there and say, these are the dates that I want to, and approve them all at once in bulk, that would be fine. It doesn't have to be per event, but, um, it can just be a blanket statement. I think that we would want something every single, to show every single date.
Last week when you mentioned that, I was thinking that it should sit with you. There's no reason it needs to sit with the rest of us. And then, you're the one in the office who can approve this at any given day.
Because I don't feel like we're trying to keep people from doing this. I think it's great for Centralia.
Absolutely.
And we do allow food trucks. It's just typically what, the, the way it works is, they, the food trucks can come, they have to be licensed. The license for, a city license is only fifteen dollars for a food truck. It's the same as a restaurant or catering business. And they, they can set their food truck in an area that's zoned for business. It cannot be zoned residential. And typically, they just get permission, like, I think we talked last week about the spud truck that parks over at O'Reilly's typically. They just have to have permission from that business to be able to sit on the parking lot and it's okay. What, when we get into that gray area is whenever they want to sit around the city square, which is a great location, but then again, it's public parking and then it's a public street. They can just take up the public street. Or if we want to, you know, maybe set up a food truck Saturday or a food truck Friday or something and we could maybe work it out to where we could make it a kind of an event, I think this would be a good way to go as well.
One thing I'd say, you need to have a, a secondary busy need for your, not...
Yes, I think, uh, or, and, or does it mean, one of the, one of the forms I was working on, might have a policy I was working on. I'll change that one there.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
We don't have to have a motion or anything, just more informational.
Now, Heather, how does that work with the ice cream truck who's all over all the residential area?
I don't know. We've allowed that before, but they're mobile. They're not sitting still. Uh, they're not parked in a certain, certain location blocking a bunch of traffic.
Well, they do when they're busy and they stop in the middle of the street because little kids are running out there.
Yeah. Then I would say they probably need to call a police department, that's the case.
Do those folks have a city license, okay?
Yes. There was a point in time where they did not, and we made sure that we posted that information online and they quickly got their business license.
So, now then, like, when Mr., the Big Cheese or whatever comes up and sets up in Hubble or over on the Parks Department at the annex, they have to fill out all these forms too?
Well, um...
Or is it just far on the city street?
It's just for public parking. Uh, we allow the parks and rec to maintain a lot of those buildings, even though they say that they're city-owned. So, they give that permission.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I know before they've given that permission.
I assume they collect, uh, collect sales tax, don't they?
I hope so. I assume so. They're supposed to provide a Missouri retail sales license to be able to get this license, so...
Something that they can check at the end of the year, assuming they have revenue for this place, so we can check that. People, I suggest, if they don't, right? So, that moves us, I, I think we're now at new business, and that was new business, kind of tied together for the first one, which was a food truck at City Square.
Yep.
Okay.
If we want to go ahead and, I mean, uh, you all are not in an objection, they, this form is not out there, so they have not filled out this form. They probably will not, so if we want to go, we, old fashioned route.
I move that we approve the request on the memo for, what's the truck name?
I don't actually have the truck name.
For Eric Aston's truck.
Second.
Number first and a second, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, so we can have the food truck. From now on, they'll fill out the new sheet. Uh, that moves us now to the mayor, uh, item one's appointments, planning zoning commission. Don Bagley is asked to be, uh, removed for a five-year term ending in twenty twenty-five. So, I'll make that recommendation for the appointment of keeping him on, uh, the planning zoning commission. The library board, we have Melissa Maxwell to replace Rhonda Brando's term to expire in twenty twenty-one. So, I'd point her for that.
Yeah, do you think those separately or separate?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm going to read through them and we'll come back and, and then the other one, we have, we have all three. An ad hoc committee for engineering RFQs, which we have talked about, I believe, but... So, back to planning, uh, zoning commission, Don Bagley, five-year term ending in twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion we approve the, the, why we have Don Bagley for five-year term ending in twenty twenty-five, second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Don will be disappointed for five years. That moves us to the library board, Melissa Maxwell to replace Rhonda Brando's term to expire in twenty twenty-one, with the partial term, so...
Make a motion we approve the, the appointment of Melissa Maxwell for library board.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So, Melissa Maxwell has been appointed to fill, uh, Rhonda Brando's position. To that hot committee for engineering RFQs, um, any discussion needed on that? To bring everybody up to speed, what we're doing with that?
I think that we needed some people to volunteer to be on that committee. Given the people that I have so far.
Okay. So, for that ad hoc committee, we would have Sean Carrico, Mike Forsy, Heather Russell, and Chris Cox.
Congratulations, Chris.
So, I guess, uh, those are the four for right now. There, there may be some more we would want to point.
Sydney, is anyone else interested?
Is anybody else interested in being on?
So, is this the, for the ad hoc engineering services or the on-call engineering services?
Yes, yes.
Who is?
Volunteering.
No, I don't know.
Are the meetings going to be in the evening?
Sure, you can do whatever.
Put my name down.
Anybody else? Okay. So, if we lose five now, uh, Mr. Hudson, probably have to have a motion.
So moved. You don't remember all the names? I was going to say, I don't remember all the names.
Oh, I can continue. Sean Carrico.
Sure.
Sean Carrico, Mike Forsy, Heather Russell, Chris Cox, and Mr. Hudson.
That's plenty.
You lay the motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, it passes. So, those five will be the charge members of that. That moves us to city administrator.
I'm on the three fourths of the packet, if you have any questions to come up with.
Is the use tax video available?
I'm quite answering.
Almost there.
I'm doing the voiceover on that.
I have a client, if you want to need a, give it to anybody.
Hi there, since it's not, since really...
Our, our thesmin is reworking it for us.
It's going to be good. It'll be done this week and then we'll be pushing it out daily, sometimes several times a day on this little...
Oh, is that on the use tax?
Yes.
And, you know, something probably talk about as we talk about that coming up. It, it's a, it's important to us to pass it. It's an educational process. Right, I'd say that as we are out in the community and we're talking to anybody, that we bring it up, actually. I would, I would look to actually, um, bring that discussion up to, to mention that it's not double taxation, it's not another tax. That's what Macon told us, federal wise, they finally got it after they educated the people well enough to understand that they weren't voting in an additional tax to themselves. And, uh, so, I would enlist everybody's, uh, help here, anybody in the audience that would know about it, to, uh, help spread that word that it's a way for us to, even the playing field of, uh, internet, mine, and, and those kind of things, to, to help our brick and mortar, our local merchants as well, for us to get our tax dollars that the state's already getting, but we're not unless we're signed up for it, so...
The only thing I would say is, probably should have been doing this a month ago because a lot of people in this town have already voted. So, if they didn't understand it, it's too late.
Agreed. We were, we've talked about it before and I think we've tried to do that a little bit when we kind of had the presentation about it. But, uh, now's the time to spread the word if we can, while we're at it. Makes sense? Thank you, folks, for that. That brings us, anything else from you? Uh, that brings us to the city attorney. I don't think she had anything.
No.
In particular, right? And now my other city clerk. That is the city clerk. Uh, that moves us to the closed session. And, uh, we are still looking to do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If I could get, uh, oh, Mr. Hudson, what do you read?
Both points? Move that we go into a closed session. During the meeting, the Board of Aldermen may elect to go into a closed session, hold a closed vote, and the purp- purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be, one, as approver under section six one zero, point zero two one, subsection one of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal actions, cause of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its eternity. Two, as provided for under section six one zero, zero two one, subsection three of the revised statutes of Missouri for hiring, firing, disciplining, and promoting particular employees by public governmental body.
Second. First and a second, roll call, roll tear.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Wilkins?
Court.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Court. All right, we're going to go into closed session, folks. Based upon, I think this is more of an informational thing. I don't think it'll be very long. A short period of time, I believe it will be out in closed session. You're welcome to stay. Other than that, I think when we come back, we're going to, as may arise, probably adjourn, so, that's me.
Yeah, I probably am too.
I'm going to go.
Whatever you decide.
So, James, who are they, hiring or firing? Don't know. Or disciplining or whatever.
Probably me. I'm being fired. Damn it, it happens all the time. Fire my knees.
Yeah, I understand that one.
Oh, you guys are so good.
What?
You signed in. Yeah. I'm good, boy.
Make a motion to table?
Aye.
First and a second to table a motion for the, uh, resolution for volunteer cadet program, see, this department.
All in favor? All opposed? So, if I don't, uh, that moves us down to permission licensing, we have the, uh, is that correct still? That will be, uh, that will be important, uh, all in favor? If we have to, I'm sure we're going to, all of us, all right? Oh, yeah, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Court? All in favor? If we have to, I'm sure we're going to, all of us, all right? Oh, yeah, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? That will be, uh, that will be important, uh, so if I don't, uh, that moves us down to permission licensing, we have the, uh, is that correct still? Purchasing.
So, I was contacted by, um, Taylor Warford and Jenny Zollers with the chamber. So, the Minmo Mud Truck contacted them saying, you know, they asked the city or the rec or somebody, I don't know who they asked, if they could park on the square, and we told them, or somebody from the city told them, only special occasions, something like that. Food trucks are being given to the city, um, special occasions. And their concern is, this is the second time that they've seen the chamber post something about food truck coming in and not be a wine walk or not be, you know, any event. It's just a food, come get your festival food and, um, there's trucks coming in, it's not a special weekend. It's just some random stat. So, they're wondering what makes their coffee truck different?
The issue was the insurance.
Wait, can we do it again, or is there laws, is there something set up that's not allowing them to do it, or what's... This is the second time they've seen the chamber pull something about food truck coming in and not be a wine locker, and not be a specialty. Event, it's just a food, country or festival food. There's trucks coming in, it's not a specialty, and it's just some way of staffing. So they're wondering what makes their coffee truck different? And is there a way, can we do it again, or is there laws, is there something set up? That is not allowing them to do it, or what's, what's going on there?
I think that's the issue.
Ah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I actually had a conversation with Jenny this morning, Jenny, that the children should have had their, and their contract with the city permission, just like they have a, and they did not. Based on their, if they do something, but I want to improve them on the plan, I want to do this. So, for sake, it doesn't have to be a specialty, if they want to do all this. And so... This is what I've got, the city code, it would allow me to, um, like, some of that, that nature fest, just like that's not allowing them to do it, or what's, what's going on there?
So I think that's the issue.
Yeah, I think. And their contract with the city permission, that is not allowing them to do it, or what's, what's going on there?
So I think that's the issue.
Yeah, I actually had a conversation with Jenny this morning, Jenny, that the children should have had their, and their contract with the city permission, just like they...
Oh, we lost our friends?
I guess it really just depends on who gets the ministry.
Yeah.
I wish her, sit in my house, wonder. I'll just, I'll just, I'll just quarantine, and that's not a question, I will stay over fourteen days. Me too. As long as it's not bubble tea.
She was trying to get quarantined, our city magistrate. Anyway, we're back, uh, for closed session.
Are you taking Eric's medicine or not?
We aren't taking medicine over, no, we didn't do that. No, we, uh, we, the only vote that was taken is to come back into session, uh, the real votes taken, it was just informational, so, uh, we're back in session, which now brings us to, as may arise? Any as may arise?
I'm not moving.
You suppose you're not?
Has there been any, has there been any more inquiries, your hon, your honor, has there been any more questions or inquiries about a, another development north of town?
Well, there's been, well, no, we're just working on it, I mean, nothing new, I mean, it's, went through planning zoning, and, uh, we really haven't got anything that we've been able to root, to do yet with it. It's a three-phase development that we haven't been able to actually move forward with, because we haven't gotten anything to present to, to this, this group, to the Board of Law, does that make sense? Uh, we have went out and got information from Boone County, and, uh, have actually had a third-party legal, uh, group, uh, which we think will start to do, that's what we're calling it, the ad hoc committee, uh, potentially, uh, have a third-party look at, uh, requests and things like that, and to, and to go through it and give us their opinion.
I heard that Darren Adams and company was reing, rewriting their proposal.
Well, they may be, they may be, we haven't seen that.
It has to cross your desk.
We haven't seen that yet.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we haven't seen that yet. So...
Make the motion to adjourn?
First, a second for adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Bring them in. Is it for Adam?